Josh, the water department's going to come more like the beginning of Monday. The beginning of next, sorry, anyway.
Hi, Bob.
So we have, we have folks on the line, just to let you guys know, excuse me, and it is six o'clock.
All right, so um, we will go ahead and open the meeting at six o'clock and we are being recorded. I'm joining via Zoom tonight because I got my second shot yesterday and I was just a little under the weather today. So um, but according to the new COVID rules, we are fine with Zoom counting as quorum. So we are good to go for tonight. Hopefully Eric shows up, but even without him, we are all set. Um, so I'm going to go to. First item on the agenda is the meeting minutes of April 5th, 2021. Were those in the email that you sent, Josh?
Okay, it was the second email I sent to you.
It was the second email, let me.
Me too, because they weren't ready when I sent the first one out.
Okay. I see ACO quarterly draft response, Blanford budget or draft STEM. Hold on, let me look back. Supporting docs for Monday. Oh, it might be in here, the one, because I resent it to myself. I'm not seeing the meeting minutes. Let me look on my phone, maybe it'll be on the. You have one, Josh, you can share online?
Yeah.
Unless I find it. Summary, oh wait, I got it here, but you can share it online too if you want.
She found it, Joanne.
Oh, yeah, okay, um.
I guess I make a motion to accept April 5th. As read, as written.
I'd second that for discussion. Uh, let me just finish going through, I've got a couple more. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
I, um, so motion, I would make a motion to go to, um. It's actually not on the. I don't think, Josh, it's on the agenda, is that right? But we want to talk with the water department about the two water breaks in town.
Right, it happened over the weekend, so it's not. It's not on the agenda, Kara, but you know, we have an emergency situation we're dealing with, so they're here tonight.
Okay, so um, our water department, are they in person?
Well, we're waiting on Gordon, so if you want us to skip and move to the next thing, so Gordon gets here.
Okay. All right, so then, um, we could go ahead and do the quarterly animal control activity report. Um, so I read through that report. It don't have any questions on it. Tom, did you have any questions? It looks like she was here come the end of March, for sure.
No, I don't have any questions, she's doing her job. I didn't realize her job until chasing chickens.
Well, I definitely, the reports, it's really nice to, to have that trans, I appreciate it.
Well, we don't, we don't have a field driver in town, so apparently animal control is going to take care of it.
Yeah, yeah, I know there was some stuff with the donkeys and horses, she was busy. Um, so I would make a motion to receive the quarterly animal control activity report. Is there a second?
I'm sure.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
I, um, I'm a little hesitant to go to DCAM just because I don't know if it's going to be a long discussion. Um, with the water break, but I guess we can start talking about it and then come back if we need to. Um. Josh, I know that you, um, you wrote a draft letter to DCAM, which I read and it looks great. Uh, do you want to briefly let people know what it's about?
Yeah, so it's, this letter specifically, um, is addressed to the commissioner of, um. What's her name, Carol Gladstone, she's the, um, the commissioner of which we received. I'm getting a little bit of feedback, so it's kind of distracting, but, um. She had responded, um, with. Um. You know, our request to have the whole entire road open up, she responded with the, the, uh, the hard no. So this letter is pretty much just a response from the town, uh, from the select board, um. Requesting that, you know, we, that all, all the decisions been made, there is a dilemma still presently at hand. Which is around maintenance and management of the entire road of Cabo Mountain from Route 23 to the town line, so. In this letter, what we're looking to accomplish now is to seek. Um, a transfer to see if DCAM would be interested in transferring ownership of the road. Again, from 23 to the town line, to town, to the town of Blanford specifically because it is on our chapter 90 list. And we do collect local, um, and state, um, tax care funds to keep up with the maintenance of that road. Um, so the cleanest way in order to maintain our obligation would be to just transfer ownership and that'll take care of that. But if there isn't any interest to transfer the ownership, then it makes no sense for us to continue to deploy resources on a road we do not own. So that's number one, um, addressing that, but also number two, um, in the letter, um, there is a, a request. To remit payment, a million, $745,000. Um, to the town of Blanford for reimbursement for maintaining the road for the last 19 years. Um, whether or not they're going to honor that, I don't know, but I think the important thing here is that we're making a point. Um, and, uh, we'll see what they respond with.
Yeah, I thought it was really direct, um, it's clear. My only question was, do we at this point add in one of our questions about, um. About allowing us to have recreation on the, on the road? Is this the time for that, or no?
Well, right now, we're. We're looking at ownership and need into management of the road. Um, I, I, I think that that's something we talk about. If they don't, um, transfer the ownership of the road, it sounds like they want to maintain their position to keep that portion of work closed, closed. Um, they had made comments, um, to Southern Heinz office regarding, you know, it's, it's one of the, um. The things that they have absolute control over to protect that area, so they kind of want to honor, um, that and, and, and. Um, it just sounded like they didn't have interest in, that the main concern is that damn people just going over that, that dam. But whether or not they allow us to go beyond that gate to the town line, there's still the question around maintenance and management of the entire road, we don't own it.
Yeah.
Um, so I think once we address that issue, we can determine from there. You know, how we want to allow rec, uh, passive recreation beyond the gate on Cabo Mountain.
Okay.
Um, if they transfer the ownership to us, then we manage it, passive recreation. But as long as it's, it's in their hands, it just sounds like. You know, they have no interest in allowing it, nevertheless, we have this dilemma at hand. Where we collect chapter 90, we also deploy a great deal of local resources to maintain that road. And we don't own it, so that's the dilemma currently that I'm trying to, try to resolve, help our cause.
We have a question here.
Sure, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, me too, good. What, what would the town say if they want to segregate the road and just from. Give us partial where the tenants live and they turn the other section over to Springfield Water. They would probably, you know, knowing the state, that they'd probably do that rather than pay up. Are we willing to accept that without any payment at all?
What's, what's the question? What are you, I'm sorry, TGM.
It was, all I'm saying is, is as obvious as this state is, they might just say, no, no comment, please. They might just say, well, we will give you the road up to so many, a mile, mile and a half, whatever it is to the gate. And then they will turn the rest of the road over to Springfield Water. And would, would this one word accept that?
They currently have the authority to defray a portion. Um, of ownership to Springfield Water, that portion doesn't exist within the border, uh, Blanford borders. There's nothing we can do there, um. The, uh, transferring war, ownership of roads to towns is, is, you know, it's, that's a normal thing, they do do that, actually, I think we mentioned. They're going to the process with the town of Templeton to transfer state owned road to the town and, and revisit their chapter 90 formula. Um, so it's not uncommon, um. What, I think, we don't know what's going to happen, we're going to send this letter and, and we'll see what they come back with, and I think from there, we, we revisit. And, and see what the select board want to do.
Um, Tom, do you have any questions on the letter, anything you wanted to, um, change or comments before we approve it?
No, because somebody put a lot of work into this to come up with the figures. I think it should go as it is. And I would be anxious to see their reaction.
Yeah, I agree, the only, um, there was one editing change, Josh, I think I sent you an email, there's a B that should be thin.
I fixed it.
Thank you, so I would, um, is there any other questions before we make them, actually, let's make a motion, then we'll do discussion. Um, so I would make a motion to approve, um, and the letter. From the town to DKM Commissioner Gladstone regarding Cabo Mountain Road, is there a second for discussion?
Okay.
Okay, um, did we have a question? No, okay, um, any discussion on the letter? All in favor?
All right.
I, motion carries, thank you for all that work, Josh, do you need me to sign that letter?
Yeah, and Eric is actually walking in as we speak, but Eric, can you sign one? The one that you have in front of you, uh, Tom, and that one that you sign, can you pass to Eric to sign when he walks in? And then give me that original and I'll go see Carol and collect.
I haven't signed the master copy yet, no.
Yeah, so the one that you have there, can you just sign it?
You stay and sign that one.
All right.
And then pass that one, the original, to Tom, and then Joanne will hold that for me.
Well, I, I passed it to me already.
Pass it to Eric, please. All right, Alec.
Tommy can't sign it.
That's okay, I'm going to go down right now. Okay, don't have it, it's got it, it's got it.
Oh. Um, okay, so do we have, we're talking about water?
Yeah.
We have everybody from the water department here now.
Um, Gordon, if, going to where, I can see you in the camera, to where the, actually Eric's going to be there, but. Just, if you wanted to take my seat, that would be, I would allow that.
With your permission, Madam Chair, thank you.
There you go, Gordon, will you head down there so I can see you and you're going to be talking into the mic? Thank you.
I agree, so nobody's bothering while we're talking. That's, that's Commissioner, Carol Gladstone.
That's Carl.
That's, that's the name.
All right, Josh, I was going to mute you, but I have no power anymore.
I'll do that.
Okay, um, so Gordon, do you want to start off and talk to us about the two water breaks we had in town this weekend?
Yeah, so they both actually happened kind of simultaneously, uh, we didn't find the second one out until early the next day. Um, we had the six inch rupture on Russell State Road. Uh. And we found that around 3:30 on Friday. I got up to Mark Boonsma, um, we kind of took a look at what it was, we got Mass Water Works Association up there, they came up with their. Equipment to try to locate it, um, we were there for probably two, three hours trying to find where the break might have been coming from, but due to the. Uh, excessive vibration and noise coming off the Mass Pike Highway. Uh, it's, it's impossible, we tried correlators, sound, sound equipment, everything, just, it just didn't work, you couldn't do it. So, we came up with the, the, the quickest option to get water back to. The residents is, um, and we went with that, it's only a temporary fix, so what we did is. Um, we made a decision to, and like I said, I called the board, spoke with the board. Um, got my resident experts opinion on that too, as to what to do. And, um, we made a decision to dig up the line on either side of the pike crossing. Tap it with some shut off valves and bypass through the two hydrants. What that does is basically, it got water back to all the residents on the lower half of Russell State Road. As quickly and as safely as possible without doing any damage to the, um. The Mass Pike, um, bridge structure or even putting damage, any damage to the workers doing the work. Because of the location of the water pipe and what's happened over the years, it's basically pinched between, uh, three phase wire, Verizon wires. And we believe in old underdrain, but it's hard to say. Uh, and in that area, the water main is about eight feet deep, so it is significantly deeper than normal. Um, so what we're trying to do here is we're, basically I've talked to EJP and. I'm getting some prices and ideas as to, you know, what we could do for a long term fix. Um, the next one came up was basically on Otis Stage Road, Route 23, it's on the lower half that involves. It was in one of the front yards of a pipe that previously broken twice before in the same area. Um, when we had gotten the. Uh, line on Russell State Road fixed and completed, we turned around and we went over and we, we had Mark. Um, and his crew go over there and they basically, um, took care of that. That was a four inch main, um, that basically ruptured itself. So they fixed that, got that back online early Saturday morning. Um, unfortunate thing with that is there is no shut off, you cannot isolate that leg of that line, so unfortunately, we had to shut off the main feed coming into the center of town. So not only did we lose Russell State Road, we lost basically Main Street, Kalen Road. Glasgow Road and a couple other smaller side streets, Maple Lane. Um. Pretty much, right, right, yeah, the whole center of town is down. Um, the clear at that point had dropped down about three feet, uh, we're normally around seven, so we had. Lost a significant amount of water due to those two breaks. Um, so we made the decision to basically, because it happened at nighttime, is to leave it shut down until eight in the morning. At this point, we're now at Sunday morning. Um. We left it off to, to get some elevation in because it takes about a foot to fill the center back up. So, um, we started that, Mark got out there around, what time, Mark, eight? About, about eight o'clock. And slowly started to repressurize, um, the center of town, Russell State Road. It was probably completed around 1:30 before everybody was back up. Um, people are complaining about like dirty water, like I said, two breaks, significant amount of water flow going in all different directions. Um, chlorine residual has been raised to deal with any kind of bacterial or any kind of issues with that, so, um. The downside is people may have some dirty water for a while, I mean, it's going to take a little time. Like I said, water is, then reverse flow, everything, a lot of flushing, a lot of heavy flushing, a lot of. Um, high volume going out of those areas where the pipe was broken, it's just broken a lot of turbidity and, you know, a lot of, um, tuberculation and. Dirt and grime off the pipes and it's, it's still flowing, like I said, we.
That water going through the fire hose for a few days is going to be boiled.
Yeah, the, uh, the Board of Health that did hand out on the north side of the pike. Uh, north, north side of the bridge, the, the lower end of Russell State Road, they did hand out notices to them people down there because. Um, we, we're using fire hoses, so we still are using fire hoses to deal with that. So, um, like I said, the chlorine residual has been bumped up to help deal with any kind of bacteria or issues that may be in the water. Um, I had spoken with DEP, they, uh, have requested sampling, like I said, um, we. We had Howard Laboratories come out and they're going to pull some samples off those two brake sites for us. So I spoke with Bernie St. Martin on regards to that, and he was going to speak to, um, Howard Laboratories because they were sampling pertaining to our, our. Treatment plant upgrade, so they're actually going to be out here today, so he was going to have them go and run two more samples.
Yeah, we've also, I talked to the fire chief. And I decided we'd leave that tanker situation in place with the dispatch for pretty much this week.
Yeah, it's probably.
That clear water while a chance to recover.
Yeah, yeah, that's a significant amount where, um. We, we boosted it up, if we can do it slowly without really damaging our filters, that'd be the best thing. Um, right now, we're, we've increased the flow, so we're putting out about 127 gallons of filter a minute. So, um, which sounds like a lot of water, but, you know, like I said, it's not really.
That one, you're, you're on 100 gallons of good.
Yeah, yeah, so what it's doing is it's bringing up slowly, it's not, it's not overloading and, and hurting or damaging the filters. Um, it's still bringing the water up, so like I said, I got to give kudos out to the, uh, I believe it was Chester. And Huntington for jumping up with, with the extra fire hoses and the fire chief, you know, Tom and Dave and, uh. John Carrington for jumping in and helping drop hoses and get the hoses, Mark Boonsma and M and M for getting out there pretty quick. Like I said, those guys were out there from 12 to 1:30 in the morning trying to get this stuff going, plus the day before that. Um, it's nice to see that when it came down to it, the town jumped together as well as the surrounding towns, they really did jump in and they really did support and help us out too when we needed it. And like I said, it was, uh, I mean, in the scheme of it, for a big town, doesn't seem like much, but for a small town, it's pretty significant, I mean. A lot of people came together to really help make this thing, you know. Not be as bad, it could have been a lot worse, but we got it controlled and under control as fast and quickly as we could.
Yeah, you, you guys definitely did, thank you so much for all the work, um, that you did. Is there anything that, um, that you need from the select board to, for us to support you and I, so if I'm understanding correctly. Otis Stage Road is, is repaired, but there's still more work to do on Russell Stage.
Otis Stage were, the Otis Stage Road is basically, um, it, that, that is another situation where we're going to have to all sit down and meet. Um, I, Mark's here too, he can kind of give you, uh, an idea on what he's, he's repaired the road a couple times, actually within this probably 40 foot, 50 foot piece.
There's four repairs in that front yard.
Yeah, there's four repairs in one person's front yard. Um, the Otis Stage Road, um, needs to have a shut off valve put in so that if we have an issue, we don't have to shut the entire center of the town down. So that needs a shut off valve, um, and we, we need to replace that entire, that entire leg. Um, of Otis Stage Road, it's, it's rotten.
How many feet? Or is it measured around?
About what, two, 2,000, 2,500 feet?
For Otis Stage?
Yeah.
Probably about 800, 800 to 1,000.
For, for all those houses? From the top to the bottom?
Yeah. If those go in part.
Yes, you figure 1,000 on the high side.
But if you're going to be the gate valve, Eric, we're going to start there.
That's right, yeah, I would say go there and put a gate valve there.
I have a bucket.
That pipe, that pipe that goes down to here, we discussed that yesterday morning, you and I and Mark.
Yeah.
They have a special tool that cut the cast fire pipe. Well, cast fire on water line, that thing will snap it right off just as clean as clean could be. This pipe was originally made for septic system, but it was cheap, so they use it for that water line. You try to use that tool on it, instead of clipping it off, it just crumbles.
Yeah, so priority wise, that, that whole line is really bad, we did Glasgow over a couple of years ago. That was, Glasgow's about the same thing.
Uh, Glasgow was.
Glasgow was galvanized, right, but lengthwise, that's about a. Yeah. When we did that over a couple of years ago, that was, that was like $80,000 to do that, but we did it all with three hydrants, all new eight inch line, everything.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, so part of this would be going from the four inch line to the eight inch, which is something that has been sort of on our radar anyways.
Yeah, eight inches a minimum now, so. So you, you, the, the valve would bump up to an eight inch, so that line would be an eight inch line, um. And then basically, if we went from, at that point, if we could go from where the highway garage is. To that area, that whole line would actually be eight inch because it, it, um, right at the top of the hill where the, where the, uh. Highway garage is, that's, um, that's eight inch up to that point. So, I mean, if you, if you wanted to even do a little better, you could go over to the main on North Blanford Road. Put a, put a new eight inch right over there, run it over to Herrick and actually that whole, you, you would actually increase the water flow and bring you some. Actually usable hydrants for fire suppression. By doing that.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
Going across that from North Blanford Road to Herrick Road.
Oh, that would be a nightmare.
Yeah. Only down about two and a half feet.
I know.
Over the wet.
Yeah.
So now you go inside, it's a full nine.
Right, I'm saying in a perfect world, that's what we would want to do, but if we were looking at emergencies, what we were going to do. I, I do what Mark was saying, put the valve at the top, replace the whole line down the street. Um, because just the amount of breaks we've had in the last four or five years, it's, I couldn't even tell you how many it's been on there. Um, I.
Mary, you had a comment, but I know you're taking pictures down, is your comment still pertinent?
Um.
Or would you like to share, probably that's a better question.
Oh, what I wanted to say was, we really should acknowledge the work that Josh did over the weekend. He was up here Saturday morning driving the town truck passing out.
Yeah, Josh.
Jennifer, the, the oil water emergency.
Yeah.
And Jennifer was right there.
Yeah, Josh, Josh, yeah, Josh and Jen both too, kudos to you guys too for coming up and helping out.
Above and beyond the call.
So, and, and, and that's something we've, we've sent out a couple of times in our water notifications too. Um, pertaining to the, the reverse 91s, people say they don't know, it's like, we've asked people to call in and. And update their information with the town, because a lot of people nowadays have cell phones. And they don't work when we don't have your numbers, and I, and this is an example of why we need your phone numbers and your information. So we can contact you when there's a problem, because then, you know, all it does is it causes frustration and anger and because people just don't know, so it's like, you know, anybody who's watching or. Needs, you know, from here or whatever, you know, pass it on to your friends, look, get your information in here, so when we do have a problem or we do need to get ahold of you. You know, when Josh does put out these reverse 91, 91s, we, we can get ahold of you and it'll be taken care of. Um, back to the Russell Stage Road, I did have EJP price that out for 800 feet to do that, like you said, we already have the valves in, we haven't gotten that yet. Um. So we did put two valves.
You're saying Russell Stage, right?
Russell Stage Road right here, yeah, so that has to be fixed first. Um. Market looked into basically, um, what they call pipe breaking.
Pipe bursting.
Pipe bursting, which is where they pull. A pipe through the bottom and they break the pipe and they pull a new pipe through. Um, it runs about, uh, 120 bucks.
And work from 60 to 200.
60 to $200 a foot. Multiply that by 800 feet.
And then the way the Verizon lines and the crew, they, our is probably going to be $200 a foot.
Yeah.
Okay, do we need to go that route?
Well. The problem, the problem is, is it doesn't solve the problem of you still have a six inch pipe.
Right.
So you're still, you're going to basically repair the pipe with an undersized pipe.
Um, so that begs the question. Does the fix use the same route as the old?
Yes.
Do you need a new route for the fix?
Well, the thing is, I would suggest running that, running a new line right down the middle of the road. It does two things, so if there's ever a problem, you know, we're all gone here, you know, they're not cursing us in about 50 years because we ran the same pipe. In that same mess that's over there. Um, because right now, it's like, you, you know, if, if Mark's got to go and dig that, you can't dig it with a big machine and that, and that line is over eight feet. You know, below grade, and we don't know if there's an, an old, um, foundation drain around there, which then what do you do? You have three phases, you got. You have three phases, you got Verizon and old under drain, and then our water lines underneath it. So it's the kinda thing where we're really in a pickle here, and I think, I mean, the smart decision would probably be to basically just. Abandon and run a new eight inch line down the middle of the road, run it straight down until we hit the line. Forty-five it and connect it into the sticks. We have a new valve up on the top, so the one good thing about the valves is, is we have a problem on the low end. Instead of losing the entire neighborhood, we can actually isolate.
And there's one spot where you're gonna have to cross under all those utilities.
Right, but if we run down the middle of the street, all we have is one Verizon line.
That's right too.
Because the power lines comes up, so we, we totally avoid all of that.
You have to cross the Verizon and two culverts.
Right.
Cause you got the culvert bub and the culvert.
Yeah, but culverts you don't worry so much.
No, no, that free, that three phase will, so. Um, so that's where we are now, um, pretty much the big, next thing we're gonna do is, um. Is talk about what we're gonna, how we're gonna get it done and take care of it, like I said, y'all know right now, we've basically committed to, um. Uh, a, a treatment plant upgrade, which is significant and processed, and we've already gone to the bid and accepted.
Going down a little bit of the road with an eight inch line is the way to go. Uh, yeah, a road will have to be fixed afterwards, but your road's gonna have to be fixed either way.
Right, right.
We might as well put the fire line works.
Right, so top of E J P, we're looking at doing like nine oh nine pipe, which is that new, new stuff they have out, it's. They stretch it both ways, it's, you know, a plastic version of duck tail.
Yep.
Um, it runs about fourteen dollars a foot, whereas duck tail runs about thirty-two.
Yeah.
Significant savings, um, the, the benefits too is, you know, no turbulence, it will accumulate. Smoother walls, water will flow a lot easier through it. Um, the bonus part too with us putting it right there now is it fixed the problem, but if we need to do a partial upgrade. That's the worst part of the whole road. I mean, we can do lower half and upper half at another point, but that is, that was the worst and scariest part, um.
So, um, Gordon, what are we looking at for a cost for this project? Do you have ideas about?
Well, material on that for that eight hundred foot section, um, I sent Josh over, Josh, you got that email today?
The select board packets, um, you have an itemized breakdown from E J P on materials.
Yeah, you're looking at about twenty-one thousand dollars. So, just to be in a nutshell, we talked with Mark, Mark says that, um, Otis Stage Road is about the same distance, so you figure. You know, give it, take a little bit here and there, you're gonna need more hydrants on Russell Stage Road because those hydrants are older. But on Russell's, I mean, Otis Stage Road, you're, you're probably looking around the same thing, maybe probably closer to. A hydrant assembly costs you around seventy-five hundred bucks, so if you need three hydrants, you add those on, so you, you know, you figure another probably. You know, what, thirty grand for materials probably on Russ, on Otis Stage with new hydrants, and I don't know how much the valve is.
So, you're looking at about fifty grand in materials, and then what do we think as far as labor?
Spent most of today catching up on sleep, so I haven't really put too much thought in that number yet.
Okay.
Get you something on the next day or so.
Okay.
I imagine it's over ten grand, right, so we're gonna have to go out for bid. Why, I'm just, it's something we're gonna have to put out for a solicitation to get done.
Yeah, I mean, this is something right now, we're gonna need the town's help on, I mean, there, there's this, we just don't. Have the means, and right now between what I'm dealing with on the other side right now, trying to deal with get, finishing that, keeping that going. I mean, this is just, it's a lot.
So, we were looking.
Josh had something to add, go ahead.
So there's, there's two issues, we have the issue on Otis Road. And the issue on Russell Stage, and the way I understand it to be is that this problem on Russell's stage is the. The emergency issue presently as it stands.
Right.
On Otis Stage, not necessarily is just an opportunity, um. I think for the purpose of, well, number one to Eric's question about procurement, dealing with this emergency on Otis Stage. It's an emergency, I don't, you know, the work's been happening and. Might not, not necessarily have to deal with, um, procurement to get what needs to be done, done, so that this temporary arrangement is no longer. Um, but possibly so the fact for the one on Otis Stage. As far as financing, they don't have any finance and immediate control at the moment to deal with either one. But as far as the emergency situation's concerned, uh, I would just need a vote from the select board to declare. I think I, I afforded care of the wording, some sort of local public health emergency on the issue, so that we can go to the D O R. Request a deficit spend, and then later we can balance it with water stabilization or however you guys decide to fund it. So I, well, it's two separate projects, um. How you strategize to use these available resources to accomplish both, or one or the other, is what we need to figure out.
So, so we have a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar emergency stabilization fund, which we should supposedly be able to draw upon for a public or. Town emergency. Two, is there any way that we can, uh, as a town. Provide the relief necessary to the enterprise account of our water department, but then. Secure that as a loan for which the water department pays back the town.
Which project are we talking about?
That was one big blob, it's all the same thing.
What about the stabilization account that the water department has?
They're gonna use that for the SCADA upgrade.
That, that's all, that's kind of plotted basically towards, yeah, that.
So they have retained earnings they're gonna use for the SCADA project upgrade, but they have. A, a stabilization line item account, which is separate from the approved retained earnings that we're planning for.
So there is some funding that water can use to start the repair?
Water stabilization has.
Was it two hundred and thousand, I think?
Uh, two hundred and forty-two thousand.
The water can solve their own problem right now, today.
Well, so, once you declare the emergency tonight, we can go to the D O R and get approval for deficit spending. And yes, we'll be able to solve this problem once we get that D O R approval, and then we can balance that on the town floor coming annual town meeting. Transfer funds that are stabilization and balance that account.
In June, right, I've just. Wanna make sure, one, water is an enterprise account, has quarter million, so it can solve or make decent headway on resolving the problem upfront. The town is a concern, needs to make sure that we have stability for the water department to move forward following this emergency and how we fund that.
Right.
Okay.
So I would make a motion, um, to declare a local emergency to health and safety. For the purpose of funding water break, uh, water break on Russell Stage Road. By authorize the town administrator to request from the director of, to the Department of Revenue. To deficit spend amount up to, and that's where I get. Um, what is an up to that you think we need for Russell Stage Road, Gordon? If you're looking at twenty-one thousand, so twenty-two thousand in parts?
Uh, I, I would say bet I would probably triple the cost of the supplies, so we probably, I'd probably say you're probably looking at. Twenty, twenty-one thousand for materials, sixty thousand for labor, if I'm going by past experience, what things have processed and run us. If you look at the extension on Chester Road, that costs us thirty thousand in labor and it costs us twelve thousand in material.
So up to eighty thousand, you're saying?
I, I'd probably say, yeah. Yeah, I can't, I can't, Mark said he'd have a number for you at ballpark better than that, I don't.
So listen, this, how about we do this, we're gonna do up to a hundred thousand dollars, that'll give us some flexibility, it doesn't mean we're spending the hundred thousand. And it opens it up, um, to that, um, thank you, Josh, so this is just Russell Stage, Otis Stage, just to clarify. Is there a second on that motion so that we can discuss it?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, that's your question, Eric.
Okay, so, I, I need Josh to explain to me the feasibility of this, in that. The water department enterprise account has money solve this problem. I understand they have that money earmarked for another project for the next fiscal year, but they have the ability right now to solve the problem.
They don't.
They don't.
They have estate, so they, there's, so you, retained earnings is their own version of free, is the enterprise accounts own version of free cash. So that a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That's committed funds to, yeah, the SCADA upgrade, that's separate from what's in their savings account, their stabilize, their own stabilization account.
Once you what, how much do you have in your operations account that you have access to?
Right now?
About five thousand.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
And it's committed, those are.
For me, given that we were having budget discussions to try and allocate a hundred and eight thousand dollars to water department last week.
Those are great, great questions and great points, Eric, um, that five thousand they have in their breaks and repairs account is, uh, already committed. Uh, so they're, they're bone dry at the moment to deal with this issue on Russell Stage.
Okay.
Um, any more discussion on the addition of the state of emergency?
Yeah, I'm against, I'm just gonna say that now, because I'd rather have a different motion. And I, and I will offer this motion, if you would allow, that we can have two motions on the floor for discussion at the same time here.
Um, okay, go ahead.
My motion is that we authorize two hundred thousand dollars out of emergency stabilization to solve the repair. Issues with the water department with the understanding that the water department will take out a loan to pay back the town.
But the water department has funding that they need in the water stabilization, why would we use the town emergency stabilization?
If they wanna crank that to us at the end of the year to pay the bill, I'm fine with that.
That just feels complicated to me.
That's my motion, anyone wanna second that? I'm saying we have the ability with funds on hand to solve the problems through emergency stabilization.
Just have a problem, what are we talking about though?
But they also have the money available.
No, they don't.
Yes, they do, they have a water stabilization account with two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
Then when we come to the floor, in June, they are welcome to move that two hundred thousand dollars into emergency stabilization. Pay the town back, or they're welcome to take out a loan and not pay the town back as.
Doesn't that just create a middleman? Why wouldn't they just directly pay their bills?
Cause we don't have to go into deficit spending if we actually have the money in an account.
Now, we can't go into that account, that, so that's, that's why we're requesting a deficit spend, because we can't take money out of stabilization. Unless we get the approval on town floor.
Even in an emergency?
Even in an emergency, that's why that, that flexibility is there for once declaration is made. The D O R says, okay, great, deficit spend, they give us the approval, we'll spend what we need to spend to fix the problem. And we'll just balance it later, and out of balancing, we're getting our warrants ready now, we'll just add an article on the warrant to transfer from stabilization. Whatever it's spent to balance the account.
So the declaring the D O R emergency allows us to deficit spend.
Yep.
We have an emergency stabilization account that we can't tap into without giving the town a forty-five day notice. Of an, a special town meeting, so, or however long notice of a special town meeting, so that we can use funds for the emergency stabilization.
But we do get to tap into it, we, we get to deficit spend and then tap into it later formally. To level the account and balance it.
Um, but I'm saying, does that make sense, that we have an emergency stabilization account? That we would have to provide proper notice of. Prior to a town meeting.
I feel like you're digressing.
I, I don't make the laws, it's.
Just making it that in and of itself is making it more complicated than it needs to be, so we can vote on my motion and kill.
If we, if we do the borrowing, then, you know, there's, when we can just, when we have the authority to deficit spend.
I will withdraw my.
Okay. Um, do we wanna mo- vote on the motion beforehand?
Yes.
Correct, the declaration of emergency with deficit spending, um, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Now, the other issue that they're bringing in forward here, I don't, I don't know how you guys wanna address, but this one on Otis Stage, I guess there's an opportunity. I don't know if that's like next fiscal year, when they have funds available again in their budget to, to do such project. Um, or however they decide to fund that, whether through loans, as Eric suggested, I don't know.
Can we, let's, let's, how about we table that and come back to it at another meeting where we're, all parties are more prepared to discuss what the plan and the costs are for that project.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I could, I could get better ideas for that project from E J P, and I could talk, you know, get an idea ballpark from Mark, that's what something like that would run. Um, as I said, we do have USDA loans out there, and Josh, you, you and I know we both talked to them, we're paying six percent on those loans, and they will not let us refinance. The only way we can refinance those loans is if we do another project. Um, don't forget, right now, we had that, um, consent order from D E P, so we have Wright and Pierce coming in. They just started today sampling, they're doing a, a, a whole system overall, uh, overhaul, they're, they're checking everything from raw water to distribution. And they're gonna basically give us a report card as to what we need to do, um, that's a two month process. So I think if we're gonna do Otis Stage Road, I think we should wait until that report comes back from the engineering firm. Uh, I, 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 I think that needs to, that can't wait, I mean, you're running fire hose, that's an emergency, Otis Stage Road. But it's, does it have to be done, it should have been done like right away, yeah, does it have to be done now? No, that does. I mean, for Otis Stage, I, I'd wait, I'd wait until Wright and Pierce is done with, with the two month process, we do the system analysis. Um, because it might be the thing is where they come back with a couple of other things, because they are looking at our. Our distribution, where it comes to how do we isolate when we have a break, they're looking at everything. And it might be the kinda thing where is, you know, maybe we, we redo our loans. And we get a lower rate, I mean, if we can get two, two percent on something, we're paying six percent, that's huge money. Our loans may not even cost us anymore because the interest rate's so darn low. Um, but it's, I mean, I think when it comes to Otis Stage Road, I think we need to kinda wait, wait until they're done with the engineering report. And, and the idea as to, cause they're, I, cause I can tell you right now, I know one thing that came up. And anybody here lives on North Street and Chester Road knows there's, there's an ex. One thing there should be is like some kind of a pressurized expansion tank up there, so that if something does go down, we do have, and, and here's an appropriate example, everybody. We, uh, we lose our clear well, we have no backup, we have no reserve, we have no reservoir, we have no storage tank. We need to get a storage tank put back in there, because right now, the, the one we have was taken offline. How long was it taken off, Mark? Four, five years ago?
Okay, so, um, sorry, Gordon, we do have some folks on line, and I think that we might have some folks in the room that might. Water line, is there anyone that has questions for water department while they're here?
I would have, the only comment I have, Gordon, is that as we're going into this emergency repair, I know we need to do it quickly, but. If we can, um, apply some good thought and planning to it, but if you elbow in and we're like fifteen yards from the fifteen feet from the end of the road, take it out the road. So that if we put new pipe in, we don't have to pick the road up again, that's my thought.
Well, what we're trying to do, like I said, is we have it right here, we wanna do, we're in the middle of the road, I don't wanna veer it back in, I just wanna go straight down till we hit the edge of the road. And forty-five in a little bit.
If you got there, you might be able to go straight down in the middle of the road and get everything.
That's what I'm hoping to do, that's what I'm hoping to do.
Thank you.
And I'm sure, you know, Martin is digging, straight line's easier than the curve line. I mean.
No one else has questions for the water department, that, I can't see all the audience there, but I know I see people online.
Um, so the other thing is too, is like I said, uh, Sarah did tell me, Sarah got a call in, she said some people are calling about their water's a little colored. You, you're, you're gonna get that for probably a couple of days, you know, flush it out, um, just a little general maintenance in your house, if you got a whole house filter. You're probably gonna have to change it, um, you know, just, just kinda do a little maintenance, things you would only do every six months or once a year. Yeah.
Or another faction, whatever you need to do.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you, you know, flush out your water heater stuff, and even if it's got water, flush it out, clean it out. Um, you know, your aerators, I mean, if you don't have a filter, clean out your aerators on your house, you know, stuff like that.
That worked, that worked good, we could use it so far, so make up one. Concerning this and put it out, and maybe it'll stop a lot of phone calls and.
Yeah, yeah, you're definitely gonna get that, might be something too, we put out with, with Sarah, not, we'll put out with the next bills too, so.
Gordon, I'm, I'm getting a question online, someone's asking about doing laundry, is the current water gonna damage any laundry?
Uh, no, it shouldn't. Uh, no, it shouldn't. The residual is well in the safe range when we're, when we were sampling out the system, like I said, we we turned it up a little bit, knowing what's going on, because we were doing a little flushing and everything else and. What is going on? Um, the residuals were around like a point nine eight point, you know, one point zero, so um, it's well within the safety range.
Does that mean my white underwear won't turn yellow?
I I don't, I have no idea what happens in your.
I'm just saying, if I'm washing it with that. Okay, if it's not from the water, I just.
Yeah, yeah, I will. Do you use all temperature chair?
Oversharing, Eric, thanks for that.
No, you should be, you should be safe with laundry, you should be fine, you you can drink it, there shouldn't be a problem with it. Um, but like I said, if you get a little discoloration, it's a secondary, it's it's not a, you know, it shouldn't be that bad of a deal, just kind of flush your system out a little bit. Um, like I said, I know Mark and Bobby and them were out there, and I was helping a little too on Sunday. You know, just flushing the lines out, getting a lot of discoloration out. Like I said, when it goes down, it disturbs everything. Um. You know, it's basically like taking a pot of soup and stirring it up. You know, it gets all messy, you gotta let it settle back down till it's nice and clear again.
And to go back to laundry question, I imagine that's the question was, if someone washes a load of whites with discolored water. Are the whites going to be discolored as well? Or the whites gonna be white when they come out?
It shouldn't, shouldn't make any difference at all, just just regular.
I have another question for you, Gordon. Um, they're asking about running a dishwasher, washing dishes, showers, bathing.
Should be fine. Your dishwasher, trust me, what you use for dishwashing, liquid and soap in there, I mean, you should be fine to go, plus now these cycles, now they run the water so darn hot. And they air and they sterilize them in there, you should be fine. I mean, if you're a little worried, put the heat cycle on, if you're if you're worried and you'll be fine.
Okay. And bathing and showering is fine.
Bathing and showering, using the toilets, you should be good to go.
Okay. Okay, um, if we are all set with water, we can move on to another um. Agenda item and you guys, I know you're probably tired, I know, Mark, you guys have been working all weekend. Um. Is there anything else for water department or that you need from us before you go?
The water commissioner is here too, if you need to ask him any questions. Sarah is here too, like I said, you did great job, she answered a lot of phone calls, like again, like I thank everybody, Josh, Jen, everybody there, fire department. So even Tom was out there too, you know, Mark, Sarah.
Thank you, guys.
The water commissioners for being there, won't need be. Okay.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
Um. So I I guess I skipped over um the audience participation and we have an audience member. Um, Kim Blanchett is there. Do you, if you speak into, there's a couple microphones, one where Eric is and then there's one hanging from the ceiling.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'm here to file another complaint, a nuisance dog complaint against the same dog Dixie. The owner has violated the order that was issued last September. Um, the dog has been seen on two other occasions besides the other day when she came down out of her driveway at me. Um, I almost got hit by an incoming vehicle because I went into flight mode and was not even watching for traffic. Um. And both my mother and my sister have witnessed the dog off leash in the front yard with no owners present in the past month.
Okay.
And I've seen coming from two people who were at the bus stop that day who witnessed.
Okay.
What happened as well as the two statements from my mom and my sister.
Thank you. Um, Kim, remind me, was it that I believe with when we left off, there was a fence that was getting put up, so the dog had to be in the backyard?
There was, there was supposed to be a fence when I called October, I think it was fifth. To see if the select board or whoever was supposed to go check on that. I was told that I believe Mr. Ackley said he thought he saw a fence up, but I'm thinking the fence he saw.
I didn't hear you, I'm sure.
The fence you saw was, I think, the pool. Fence, it was stockade. Yeah, so I don't know, because from the road, you can't see any di- any any additional fencing. So I have not seen her all winter. Um, and I started again this spring with my phone on every time I walked by the driveway, because I still can't trust him. Um, and the other day was the first time I didn't have my phone out walking by the driveway. So. I saw her at the top, I tried to hurry my dog and me by. The kids were at the bus stop, we, they were waiting for kids to be dropped off, one bus had already dropped students off. Um, the kids hollered across to how cute Trooper was, Dixie turned to see why they were hollering and came barreling down the driveway after Trooper and I again. And I just went into flight mode, I ran across. Down into the ditch, across to Calum Mountain Road, kind of stumbled and stood up and there was a red truck right in my face, I almost got hit. So, um, Dixie, I don't know at that point if she actually came all the way into the road. But other people there said, yeah, she kind of came out, but then turned around and went back into the yard and then moseyed her way back up, Fiona hollered once, never bothered to come down to get the dog. I'm just done.
Okay.
Kara, I have a, I have the formal complaint that uh. Uh, that Kim spilled out, so my motion is just that the board accept the formal complaint on behalf of the A C O and refer it to the A C O for action.
Okay, I would second that. Um, any discussion on that?
Yeah, no, I've been in contact with Terry and she knew that I was dropping that off tonight.
Okay. Um, okay, a- all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so the do- uh, the dog officer has been made aware of the situation and is in the process, I'm understanding, of reaching out to the owners.
She said she was just gonna go give the owner a warning on Sunday and I said. You can, but I'm filing another complaint.
Yes, so we were waiting for actually the the letter she passed over to Eric, we were waiting for that. Uh, and pretty much the process that went down last time. We're gonna follow that same process where we have the hearing. And you'll vote whether or not you want to make a determination if the dog's a nuisance or if it's a dangerous dog.
Oh, I think we need to step it up, because the owners.
So I'll, I'll uh, um, hand the complaint to Joanne, so Joanne, you and Josh have it for when Terry comes to town to keep that up from.
So did we, we found last was a nuisance dog, is that correct?
Correct.
Same dog, in place.
Okay.
It's just she's violating the order, she she.
Yeah.
She loved the dog and would do anything to keep the dog, but yet she won't keep the dog on leash.
Yeah, my understanding was it was supposed to be in the backyard only in the fenced in area and not.
She, no, it was supposed to be on leash or in the in the fence, I also attached the order and she did ask that if they were in their very backwoods like a hundred acres, she could let her off leash.
I have the order there, it says, a dog known as Dixie should not be allowed outdoors on the approved portion of the owner's property. Located at twelve Virchell Road, within five hundred feet of any public way in the town of Blanford. Or in any property owned by any other person, including public ways of the town. Unless this, unless this secured behind a fence or held on a leash held by a responsible adult.
Okay.
Uh, question for you, Kim, and I know we've already had the motion, uh, when I read the report, did uh. Was the dog trailing a leash or did it not have a leash?
Yeah, they leash it off.
Okay.
And the owner didn't even bother to come down the driveway to see what she was barking.
Well, I'm sorry, I had to go through that again, Kim.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night. Good night. Okay, um. All right, I'm gonna move to, um. I know that we have a COVID update and a Shepherd Farm update, but we also have our finance committee with us. Um, so. Should we move to go to the uh, the budget and capital request review?
Well, um. We. I'm just thinking, do we have anything for COVID nineteen update?
I don't think so.
And do we have?
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay, do we have anything Shepherd Farm?
Nope, no updates, just that our expression of interest is pending with the Commonwealth.
Okay, so we can move to the budget update. Once, I'm just gonna be.
Do I need a motion for that?
No, it's just next in line, right?
No.
F Y twenty two budget and capital request for you.
Did we skip over COVID and Shepherd Farm or not?
There were just no updates.
Okay, sorry. I'm back.
A and B, no updates, we're on C.
I'm back.
Thanks for tuning in.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Josh, the revisions are just those that we made sort of together last week, is that correct?
Yeah, um. I don't, I sent it to you guys, if there's any questions, but I just, here's the. The total operating. If I can get to it, find it, it's in yellow, there it is, four million eight. But here's your pilot payment. Right here.
Yep.
Transfer to stabilization building one hundred eighty thousand thirty four. So it'll bring us to four million hundred eighty eight thousand, you still have about three grand below the target mark. That we were, um, so you have three grand of flexibility, if you can leave it like that, or you can. Put it somewhere, whatever the case.
Okay.
I'll let you know. That there's still about three grand of flexibility.
I think it's wiser to put it to an account.
Yeah.
Just kind of leave it floating.
Like selectmen salary, that'd be all.
I was gonna say recreation.
Just a joke for people.
Listen, the Russell Pond is opening this year, we could put recreation and maybe uh. Talk some sense into him this year.
Clarified, putting it on the selectmen salary was just a joke, if you'd like it.
You're on your way out the door.
Yeah, right.
Um, let me show you the revenue. Screen share here.
So yes, it is better to have the money, as we have learned from last year, it is better to have the money that you're raising in appropriate attributed to an account rather than you raise appropriately. Not have an account design.
In all seriousness, though, um, there is gonna be a uh anniversary, I think it's like a. Two hundred, is it two hundredth anniversary of the historical society building or something this summer? Um. So, or the White Church or something, so maybe if uh if recreation wanted to, um. Joanne, I know you don't need anything extra, so I'm not throwing anything on you, but if we do, if we throw some extra funding in there. Help out with that in some way, maybe.
And celebrate now, picture its foundation, so I think that's our second white church. Yeah. That one?
Yes.
Okay, I thought that one burned down.
Not that one.
So are you guys okay with putting that in the rec fund and then if we want to help out with that celebration, we can?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, hold on. I was trying to tell you exactly how much, but uh.
Oh, we should have asked Kim while she was here if her niece would sing for the um Blanford Day. I gotta ask her for um, our Blanford baseball day, the national anthem.
Four one eight seven ninety. Point two four. Yeah, three thousand one hundred and seventy five dollars. Or you don't budget any of it. And your tax rate goes down a couple pennies. About a penny or two.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how much of a difference that makes.
Just budget them out, three thousand, whatever for recreation.
Um, Josh, I read your letter about capital, um, so you're looking for us to, um. Keep two hundred thousand in free cash, so you wanted us to decrease.
That's, that's just a a recommendation, a strategy, more or less, you can keep it as is, if if you do want to keep. Two hundred thousand in what I like to call the free cash cloud. Then we'd have to. Um. Take away about forty two thousand from something.
Well, given the discussion we just had with the water department, do we really think it's feasible that we're gonna have two hundred thousand dollars in free cash that we're not gonna want to use?
Well, right now, we're not, we're not using any of our free cash to go toward this issue. Um. I mean, that's, that's there. You know. If you need to use it for anything, but we haven't really seen a an actual. There is a, a, there is a, uh. If you. About a hundred and twenty thousand that's going towards the SCADA project out of free cash and that. Use, all those projects you committed from the last meeting leaves a balance in your free cash cloud of about a hundred and forty. Hundred and fifty grand or so.
Hundred and fifty seven, I think.
Uncommitted, that's not committed to anything.
Here in the next month.
What's the question, Eric?
Do we not believe that water through deficit spending is not going to utilize money here in the next month or two?
As it stands, no, I mean. They're gonna deficit spend a hundred grand and we're gonna balance it using water stabilization, they'll be covered.
And when we use the hundred thousand dollars from water stabilization. For which we appropriated a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to match their entire. Water stabilization account to accomplish the SCADA fund. Where are they going to get the deficit for which they took out of that account to pay for the repairs now?
Eric, so remember, they have their own retained earnings, which is the enterprise's version of free cash, you keep confusing the two. The water stabilization and the retained earnings. The retained earnings is not included in that stabilization account, because it's never been moved into there. What we're gonna do is take those retained earnings and commit it to their capital projects line item, so they can work on their SCADA project. Uh, that doesn't touch any of their. Uh, monies that are in their piggy bank, um.
Their retained earnings are how much?
That's about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars or so.
So the entire project on Otis Stage Road, they're going to complete with retained earning funds?
No, no.
Water stabilization.
He's saying Otis Stage, Russell Stage is gonna be covered using.
Sorry, my mistake, Russell Stage.
Russell Stage, okay, yeah, that's gonna be through, we're gonna balance that deficit spend using water stabilization, not retained earnings.
Okay, so they're covered, we're just allowing them to.
They're all good, yep. Well, they're covered right now, you know, nothing surprises me anymore. Uh, we don't know if there's gonna be another unanticipated event, so knock on wood.
Management reserve. For F Y twenty two, how much did we commit to management reserve?
Forty thousand.
You might want, might want to consider making that a hundred. Just to allow for Otis.
There's just no.
Well, plus he spoke about refinancing his current loans.
He can, he can, he can, he can only refinance that if they do a major project funded by the USDA.
Yeah. And we're, we're looking into that, but also remember, Eric, part of your strategy that was talked about at the last meeting is to. Use a hundred thousand out of free cash for uncommitted capital projects, so that's your flexibility right there.
I've been looking into that for three years.
You're an Eric?
I'm good.
No, it's just explaining to you that. In the strategy you guys discussed at the last meeting. You committed a hundred grand in the capital projects line item, that's not committed to any project, so that's your flexibility right there.
Roger that, except for Mary's got her hand up, she wants to build a library. What's up, Mary?
Well, I like to build a library, but I would also like to remind. The board and Josh and every, and the finance committee that you asked for long range planning. And in twenty fourteen, the town clerk's office requested, as mandated by chapter sixty six of the Massachusetts General Law, section eleven. A vault that meets the current standards for smoke free, water free, draft free, robber free, everything free. And we don't do it today, we don't need it tomorrow, but I would like to see it on the town's radar, please, because we do not have. Universal access to the existing vault.
Okay, so here's my, here's my do out to you, Mary, because I know you'll do it.
It's done already.
You have a quote?
I do, I gave it to.
For where the vault would go and all construction and insert and all that stuff that it would take to put the vault wherever we need to put it?
Yep.
How much is that?
Uh, I believe it was what, ninety seven thousand dollars?
She's looking at you, she's not looking at me.
It's under a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a a system that works, there hasn't been any real need or priority that comes up to the forefront to. Have limited resources of the town being allocated to build a vault in the town clerk's room. We have a sit, yeah, when, you know, there's things being stored in the. We have a si- yeah, when, you know, there's things being stored in the vaults. As required by um uh the laws, um, and there's nothing that prevents the town clerk from getting it in, in a reasonable time. Um, so. A hundred, I don't know how I can explain to the townspeople. Um, yeah, we have this system and it works, but we're gonna spend another hundred thousand to build another vault. Um, it's just irresponsible in my mind.
Okay, may I remind you that the existing vault does not meet. The standards required by the state to keep our records safe. And again, this doesn't have to happen today or tomorrow or next year, but please just leave it on the radar. If we win the lottery. We have an opportunity.
Where every time we wanna win the lottery, Josh wants to save that money. He doesn't wanna spend it on the town. I'm just saying.
I am spending it on the town, on projects that, I'm trying to build a library, for heaven's sake.
Alright.
Stand a library.
So.
From last week or our last meeting, just, it's just a. Nothing big, but we had discussed uh with the budget and everybody's, we wanted to keep it level funded. Um, so with that being said, everybody was cut across the board to keep it level funded and their expense accounts were cut across the board. Um, and then Mary had brought up the, the town clerks, I think it was at three thousand. And then it was gonna be cut by like nine hundred and forty dollars. And then the discussion was made to just keep it level funded. But with that being said, that's not keeping with the same. We cut everybody's expense across the board. Um, so that's not keeping with the same. Yeah. Um, I just, I, and I just feel that if everybody's expense is cut, then that's how it should be across the board. And not, you know, it's not fair to other departments that had to take the cut. And now we're giving back to one department.
Are you gonna cut the departments at level funded?
They have, they have been.
Everyone has.
Everybody was, everybody was cut, everybody's expense was cut because everybody got the raise. So in order to get the raise, their expenses were cut. And that was across the board. Every single department had cuts and the expense department, not it. So they stay level funded, but their expense account took a hit.
We did kick this around a bit. I think we had uh. Um, part of the reduction in expenses is a lot of our expenses are now flowing through Joanne. So we saw a reduction in some expenses for. Office goods and stuff like that throughout the building. So a piece of that makes sense to me that people would lose some money from their expense account. Not all of it. And then I think Mary is the only person that's actually come forward from a department that said, hey, I need that money.
But we, we don't have anything itemized here, so we don't know.
Yeah, so that, that was gonna be my question, Kathy, is I guess part of me last week was questioning. I, I guess I don't see when, so when Josh, um, you know, puts forth the stuff for. Do the um, the seminar that we go to uh in, you know. Itemized list of exactly, you know, how much it costs and all the different expenses. So I guess what I saw last, what I heard last week from library was just. Um, it's nine hundred and forty. I didn't, I don't know if finance, did finance see an itemized list or anything, or is it just?
And then we're talking about the town clerk, not the library.
Sorry, town clerk, I apologize.
Yeah, library, we have more of a legal obligation to fund correctly.
So not, not talking library, town clerk. Kathy, did you guys see the itemized list for that?
No, we, I haven't seen anything. Not itemized for the expenses.
So the only issue, if we, if we revisit this, which is a valid question to ask. Is town clerk's expenses are currently less than a thousand dollars and. We've got May and June left to go. So what would the town's clerk expect to spend two thousand dollars on in the next two months?
Hostage. For one, and we don't know about our pre-bid seminar. Which probably will not happen, but there may be a virtual event that we may have to.
So I'm not hearing thousand, though. I mean, posters is, what, like three hundred a pop?
I'm sorry. It's an uphill climb. So you've got fifty-five hundred dollars out of elections.
Yeah, well, last year was an election year and this year is not. So I, yeah, obviously that we save a bit there.
And for the purpose of this Excel spreadsheet, I think that that's why it's separate from the town's clerk budget, because it's not really. See, here's elections and registrations, which is separate from this operational budget. Because it does shift every year depending on the election cycle and it, and it's confusing. It gives you that perception. That there's more in the town clerk budget that we're giving away. It's not they were giving it away, it's just not an election year, so. You know what I mean, it's.
So let me frame this in the give-a-hoo frame. In the give-a-hoo frame, we just had an extra three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars that we didn't know what to do with. We just said, eh, let's stick it in recreation. So if we have a department that came forward and said, hey, please don't cut this, give us a chance to use it next year. And yesterday we had that, or last week, we had that discussion. Finance was here, Josh was here, we were here and said, yes, do it. Then my question is, why are we having the discussion again?
I guess that, it just to be fair to other departments, I think it's just fair to have that discussion. And, you know, when I thought about it afterwards last week, I thought about the fact that we had not seen any itemized anything. We hadn't seen any. Numbers. And I think, um, you know, yes, someone from another department could have come forward, um, absolutely, but we saw Rainey. Um, and he said to us, you know, I need this money here, but feel free to take it from somewhere else. Um, I, I just feel like if we're gonna make a fair budget, that's really looking out for, you know, reducing the tax. You know, not, not raising taxes. And we're saying to everyone, we're, we're level funding your expense. Um, I just think we have to be fair. So if you come to us and you say, I need this money, okay.
So.
Show me the proof that you need that money.
Where do we put it?
So if you, if you put it back and we don't spend it, you're gonna get it back. To the general fund, right?
The free cash later in the year.
It's a pittance. And if we do spend.
I get that. And it's, it's the amount of money and it's not the, I think it's just that we're following the process and we're. Having like a fair conversation for, across the board for, like Kathy was saying, you know, for everyone took a hit. Um, so I think it's just about having a, a fair conversation. And, you know, I know how hard the finance committee and Josh worked to put together. A budget that, that wasn't easy to put together. Um, I just wanna make sure that. That, that we're following that process and then it's fair across the board. That's, that's just where I, that's where I'm coming from. Go ahead, Eric.
Okay, so where do we put it? That's my only question. We don't want the nine hundred dollars to be in clerk's line item. And we apportioned all other money to a line item. Where do we want to apportion that nine hundred dollars?
Capital projects, building stabilization.
Finance, pick one.
I don't understand your question. To tell you the truth, I mean, we cut them nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. So it's part of that, that's in the budget.
Okay. So we had, we had, we appropriated or intended to appropriate that nine hundred and twenty-four dollars to that lineup. Now, we had the same discussion twenty minutes ago. Seventy-five dollars that we had budgeted, but didn't have a place for us. We said, put it in recreation. Of the nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. Where do you wanna put it?
Well, you could say that about any department, cuz we did the same thing.
It's not what I'm asking. If we don't want the money to be in the town clerk line item, if we want it to be nine hundred and twenty-four dollars less. Where do we want that nine hundred and twenty-four dollars to be? Cuz we've appropriated everything else, even if it was excess raised, to the tune of that three thousand dollars that we didn't need. But we were that close to our tax levy, so we said, go ahead and keep it and put it in the recreation fund. So where do you want the nine hundred and twenty-four dollars? I don't care.
And I see what Karen, he's, so Eric is finance committee, select board members. That's fine. That, what he's saying is, where do you wanna put it? Is there another source you wanna move the funds to if there's an agreement here to do that?
Well, I wouldn't put it into anyone else's expense account, cuz I don't think it'd be fair. Um, so. We could just add it to one of the, the capital or of somewhere.
Put it towards the vault.
He wants forty-two thousand dollars to go into free cash to make it six hundred thousand. With the nine hundred towards that.
I just, I don't care.
I think we're losing track of what we're discussing here. In other words, I think that. What Kathy saying is there was a, a policy applied. Doing a whole budget to all departments that they got two and a half percent raise and. To make it level, that amount for that department was taken out of their expenses.
Absolutely tracking you. Absolutely tracking you.
Right, so that's what the policy is. And so it has to be true for all departments. Because if you make an exception.
Right, so where's the nine hundred? But where's the nine hundred and twenty-four dollars go? That's all I'm asking.
Put it in capital.
No, no, it went to the increase.
We put it back.
Yeah, we put it, we put it back, um, Janet.
Yeah, so if this week.
Here.
Twenty-four back out. I just wanna know where it's going. That's all. That's it. Pick a spot and let's move on. In fact, Josh and finance committee, totally your discretion. Put it somewhere, we don't care. I don't.
Alright, so are we, do we have any more questions on the budget? Before we move on?
Wait, so what am I do, is that what I? Okay.
Put it in one of the funds that we, um, that we're saving.
Okay, we'll figure it out. Okay.
Do we have any more questions on the budget before we move on?
I just know next week where the nine hundred and twenty-four dollars went. That's all I wanna know. Okay, next week, I wanna know where the nine hundred.
If I was there. I don't know what I'd do, but it wouldn't be pretty. You're testing my patience.
That's why I'm in the chairs now.
Oh, don't even think that you're really in the chair, my friend.
You guys are funny.
I get it.
The thing is, that figure is out there, what do you do with it?
Right.
We got it. We're gonna put it in one of our savings accounts. It's gonna be good.
Taken out at the beginning and distributed so that it bounced. He's asking for, to take it from somewhere else and put it back in the budget. Am I getting that right? Was that all was done, we had a budget. Three thousand, whatever Josh. And we gave it to the recreation committee now. We could consider giving it to Mary.
No, no, Janet, that's not what's going on.
I'm just saying, that's the only option was to give it to recreation.
So it's the, it's the. Joanne, it's the big, it's the big end number. So. At the end of the day, we'll be asking the town to raise and appropriate through various means, four million dollars and change. At the end of this budget, we had three thousand in chain. That wasn't really assigned to a line item that we just gave to the regiment. By moving, uh, by taking that nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. No, 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 no. So, so that was last week with the decision that the town clerk was. Fully funded in the expense account, but to ensure equity, we now have to take nine hundred and twenty-four dollars out and accrue some more because.
Yeah, so in retrospect, in fairness, um, let's put that extra three thousand in capital with the nine forty. Okay, so we're not gonna give it to rec, we're not gonna look like it's, you know, unfair. Um. We'll put it in capital with the nine, so it'll be about an extra four thousand in capital. And now we're gonna move on to whatever job is next. Josh, what is this that you have up for us to look at?
Beat up the rec committee like that. Yeah, they will. If it all goes to capital.
Listen, if I had that hammer right now, I'd be slamming it down.
I, I can ex, I think it sounds like.
I think Joanne was just asking a question and I answered it for her. I didn't mean to make.
I just had an understanding and if you want me to clarify a little bit, or if you wanna move on, whatever works.
Let's move on.
Okay, all department expense report.
Well, before you do that, Eric, the, are we all good with, I have it appearing to shared screen. Our commitments for free cash.
Uh, make it a little bigger, would you please?
Yes, sir. View.
So we see a hundred thousand for emergency stabilization.
Actually, we read it better there than I can with my glasses on here. Thank you.
Twenty-five thousand for library, a hundred thousand in the road debt principal, seven thousand for class A uniforms fire. Thirty thousand for the fire. Twenty thousand for the ash tree project, the tree warden. Uh, ten thousand to the library for the shaker repair. A hundred thousand in capital, which is now gonna be a hundred and four. And this data project, um, which we're committing to a hundred and twenty.
Now, with this capital summation, Josh, you're telling us that we're still carrying a hundred and forty to a hundred and eighty thousand.
Fifty-seven, about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that, Josh?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I think that's a, um, but just to give you an example, um, of why it's important to keep, um, some sort of a cushion. Remember how I explained to you at the last meeting, the, the, um, the, the, uh. Chapter ninety project that didn't get reimbursed timely. It got deducted from our free cash amount. So let's say for next year, for whatever reason, we don't collect. Chapter ninety projects on time. And it adds up to two hundred thousand, then we'd be, we'll have a negative free cash balance.
Sure.
Um, so we, you know, we wanna make sure we leave a nice cushion so that if there is a discrepancy. That we don't, we're nowhere near hitting a negative free cash balance for whatever reason. Um, so that's why I was just saying, hey, maybe we should leave at two hundred thousand. I think a hundred and fifty-seven thousand is gonna be safe. I don't anticipate. Not collecting two hundred thousand dollars of reimbursed money. I'm all over that for sure this time around. Um. That's totally up to you guys. I was just letting you guys know and just putting a recommendation out there.
Finance committee?
No, I think we need the free cash portion, for sure.
You're comfortable, I'm, I guess the question posed to the finance committee is. You're comfortable with one fifty-seven? You don't want it to be bigger or lower? Okay. Alright. Thumbs up on this side of the table.
Looks good.
Keep the one fifty something.
Yep.
We all seem to be in agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so if I'm looking at the agenda, um, it looks like. Uh, we have some new business of the department, department expense report and the annual draft warrant. I looked over the expense report and I didn't see any of it. Um, jumped up to me. Would you guys see anything?
No. Not yet. I don't see anybody severely. Oh. What are we gonna do with the? Animal, well, I guess that's a question we have to do later in the year, cuz like animal control expenses are like. Three percent against the three, or twenty-five hundred dollar budget.
Yep. Um, that's, that's a, just so you know, that's flexibility you have. We have to move money around, a balance, uh, the budget. Um, and take care of year-end stuff. There's money there to tap into.
Have you, uh, the only question I've ever asked, I think we're still in winter season, is that correct? Uh, sorry. I see that the highway fuel oil winter expenditures. Is at eighteen percent for their fuel budget. So are we having them fill their tanks? To spend that, or are we looking at reallocating that townway as well?
Um, you're looking at highway, which one are you looking at? Fuel oil winter specs, expense?
Four twenty-two fuel oil winter expense, yeah.
So that budget is, that is overfunded. I brought this up last year and everyone scolded me about not being able to touch snow and ice.
No, we just have a plan to move it, that's all.
We don't touch it at all, but it's always over, it's always gonna be. Like eighteen percent spent, more or less. It's over budgeted than what it should be. But in the flip side, you know, if we do deficit spend like you see there, negative five thousand nine hundred fifteen and plow blades. But in the flip side, you know, if we do deficit spend like you see there, negative five thousand nine hundred fifteen in plow blades, this all will balance itself, um, but I do think that it is over budgeted, um, but folks keep telling me I can't touch it, so I don't touch it.
Uh, Mary, as a library trustee, you're at fifty-five percent of library salaries? So that means with two months left in the year, you're gonna have a fairly large unencumbered salary balance there.
Um, Nicole has organized it and I'm sorry she's not here to respond.
Well, there's three months, because this is from March thirty first.
Yeah.
Is it?
The day on March thirty first, the west corner.
Oh, okay, so we got three months left on it, so it still might, you still might end up with, we might end up with three, four, five thousand dollars out of that count that we'll pull.
I know she has plans.
So. Just saying.
You think that was COVID related?
I mean, it's, it's not bad, don't feel challenged to spend it all, I'm just saying that here, this late in the year, it should be at seventy-five percent and it's twenty percent underspent, so.
Alright, anything else on the expenditure report, are you guys ready to talk about the warrant?
The only other thing was if you saw the water department superintendent salary, that's, that's well underspent.
So, yeah, Gordy, Gordy has been hourly, rather than just kind of spreading it out where you have the salary equal across a year.
I get it.
And, and so when COVID hit, there wasn't any real defined office hours here in the town, so he wasn't applying, he was only working when he needed to work and tap into that when he, you know, so that's why that is, but once we open up town hall again and we have set office hours and we're managing our projects, um, much, much more aggressively, then he'll have a steady flow of usage of those funds.
I'm just saying, it's where they can get cash to fix their pipe, okay, um.
Maybe.
We are on to, what'd you say, warrant, who's got the warrant?
Looking at the warrant for the, um, the, uh, annual town meeting, so this is a draft, um, Josh said he highlighted, oh, I'm act, I'm, I'm thinking that I'm scrolling it and you're scrolling it, that was just so confusing for a second, um. So he had highlighted, um, things that he's still working on, it looks pretty standard, um, if article one through, I think, nine is pretty standard, something we do, those are all articles we have every year, just with different funding amounts. Um, the first one that's a little bit different is the, maybe article ten? No, budget, um, it doesn't, maybe article twelve, but all of them are pretty standard budget articles, is that right, Josh?
Yeah, right, so here, in the beginning, you have your education.
Yep.
Um, here's the school budget, vocational ed, which, um, we have less in, signed up this year for vocational ed, so we might see some savings there, but you know.
Nice.
It's, you never know what happens with these things, then you have, uh, your cost for transportation, this is the, the vote for the borrowing from time to time, um. Uh, this, these here, these free cash, I populated the figures of that form we went through of what you committed projects to.
Yep.
A hundred thousand to emergency stabilization, to, when you add up all those, the U T V, the uniforms, the, 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 the ten thousand for the, uh, library, all of that adds up to about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Okay.
Well, then there's a question for you, do you want me to identify those separately, or do you just want to keep it like this where we just, we could share it on town floor, what we anticipate to spend the money on, but just leave it?
Yeah, I think leave it like that, I think the simpler, the better.
Here you have the twenty-five thousand, um, so it's clear, we're depositing the library stabilization. Um, free cash, uh, here's your transfer from free cash to a hundred, oh, this is the road, the road debt, um. Oh, and then here would be, once I, once you, I mean, we got the finalization tonight, here after we subtract all, all of these other, the transportation, the education, um, we put that number here. And that's the rest of the budget.
For article thirteen, um. I don't want to say this. What, does, is there, should we just transfer from water stabilization, the sum of X to a water department account?
This is the SCADA project.
Nah, no, article thirteen is not SCADA.
Oh, sorry, yeah, this is, this is gonna be what we spend on the deficit.
Right, so rather than say it specifically for the water, can't we just put it in there, whatever their maintenance account, just we're transferring this sum to this sum to.
Actually, it's not water department capital, it's water department breaks and repair.
Right, I mean, just so that we just put it in the right account, they write a check out of it, big deal, right, we don't.
Oh, yeah, right, so we're, 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 we're gonna be deficit spending the water breaks and repair account, Eric?
Yeah.
So that's just what we want to balance it later.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to say it that way, rather than say that we're transferring from water stabilization to the capital account to do a fix, right? Because is it really capital or is it not capital?
Reconstruction.
Right.
They have a, sorry, that was my fault, I meant brakes and repair, because they do have a brakes and repair account, that's, so what, basically, let's say next week, after they do the job, we find out it's seventy thousand dollars negative.
That's where you're going right here.
Right, here would be seventy thousand to balance that, and it'll be at a zero balance, the brakes and repair account.
Yep, good with that.
Okay.
Here's the municipal light, um, seventy thousand out of their stabilization to fund operating. Transfer from bill funds to borrow, this is the, uh, the borrowing, the authorized borrowing for the, uh, municipal light project.
So my only question with that one was, um, instead of, do we have to put raise and appropriate transfer or borrow, or do we just put borrow there?
Just put borrow.
With borrow. Raise or broke.
To see if the town will vote to authorize borrowing a sum of five hundred thousand to be paid back out of, do we tell them where it pays back out of, or we don't care?
No, we don't, we don't add that in here, I don't believe.
Or vote to borrow, okay, a sum of, got it.
So the only way that will change, Josh, is if somebody on the floor looks at all of the free cash articles and says, hey, I don't want none of this free cash crap, I'd rather pay the broadband five hundred thousand with it.
Yo, you're gonna borrow money for that, it isn't coming out of free cash.
What I'm, that's the only, the only risk that I see in this town meeting is if somebody looks at the free cash expenditures. At borrowing five hundred thousand and says, I bought, I want all these articles canceled. Right, that's the only explanation we'd have to make.
I've, I've been told that we've dumped a pile of money into this broadband already, and they're still keep asking.
Well, we knew that was gonna happen.
Yeah, I did, a lot of people thought, no.
You're, a lot of, many people don't understand construction cost of sixty-three mile fiber lay.
Alright, so then article six is, um, what we talked about a few weeks ago, where we're gonna, uh, change the bylaw to move, um, town meeting to the, in June.
Yeah.
And then article seventeen amends the elections um, from May to June. And article eighteen is going to be an amendment to the, um, the dog control.
This is a new one, and I, and Mary can explain this one, we were just going over it today.
Is door, okay.
Just, um, if you're seventy years or older and have a dog, you don't have to pay for your license.
Great.
That's general law, and also it mentioned, I think service dog is in there too. No, it's not.
Right, yeah, no, no fee shall be charged for a license issued for a service animal.
Yeah, and this will take effect the next year, so the twenty-two dog tags.
As defined by the ADA, not by anybody else. Not by your local, uh, I have a emotional support dog.
Okay, um, and then the next one we have is, um, nineteen, and this is about, uh, raise appropriate. What is this one?
Commissioner one, um, the, the lean.
Oh, okay.
Late fees.
Mm-hmm.
That we talked about, about two meetings ago or last.
Yes, I think, has Russell just done this, or Chester, one of the other towns, I think, did this in a special town meeting?
Mark is supposed to give us the language there, right?
Yeah, and, and to that note too, Eric, these, after tonight, I'm gonna send the draft version to Mark and we're gonna start, you know, hammering this out, so it'll be much more clear and he can advise us on these bylaw changes.
Hey, we have a hand raised in the room for the, Mary.
Go ahead.
Our article, uh, I would suggest article twenty, and if Mark finds it illogical, we can eliminate it. To, the town will vote to authorize the town clerk to make non-substantive changes in the bylaws like numbering commas, parentheses, abbreviations, or not.
Say that again?
Non-substantive changes, so that, and we can, we can make a grammatical change without changing any of the bylaw.
The comma can do that.
Well, it was incorporated in the bylaw where we changed the usage of select men to select board, and that specifically requested that the town clerk's office make all changes in all of the bylaws that reference selectmen to select board, which we did.
But they misspelled it, B O R E D, so now they want to go back and correct it.
Virtual hammer.
Seriously, I need one.
The other.
That was a good, clean joke right there, I don't care who you are.
There is a, another possible bylaw change that came up today, I told the animal control officer, I'd bring it up, not the animal controls, the police chief. And I know we talked about this before regarding how the animal control officer provision is governed. Currently, it's not a function of the police department, it's separate. Um, uh, if, if, you know, I think there's an opportunity here to have that conversation, whether or not you want the role of the animal control officer to be supervised and under the direction of the police department. Or the police chief, should I say?
Um, what would be the pluses and minuses to that, I guess?
I, I, all, I think it just shifts the responsibility from me overseeing to, I mean, to, to the chief overseeing, they'll, they'll, you know, submitting payroll and, and dealing with issues and.
Yeah, Chester question first though, right?
Huh?
That might be something we, a conversation we have to have with Chester.
Well, that's why Tammy has mentioned it, because Chester brought it up to them too, and I think they're exploring it at all, so I thought that'd be the opportune moment, we made the change together, so it's consistent.
Yep.
But, uh, to your point though, Kara, yeah, it'd be great to know and, and understand what are the direct, um.
Yeah.
Difference, um, either way.
Let Chester do the footwork and then we will piggyback.
As the police chief authority, you oversee both functions regardless of whether if it's the way it is now or under the chief, you still have the same autonomy.
I think the rub of it is that the animal control laws in the state of Massachusetts allow us to either appoint an A C O or allow us to appoint a police officer to act as the A C O. And, or we allow an appointment of a police officer to carry out the function. So, I think that's the, that's what it is, I don't think it says in there that we make the A C O accountable to the police officer because, or the police force, it only happens if you're, if you decide to make your police force the A C O. And I think that would be my position, is that if we want a police officer to become trained and be the A C O and become the new Terry, fine, or if we want to train Terry to be a cop, I don't think she wants to be a cop, I think she wants to be an animal cop, so.
That brings up the issue of, of guns too.
Right, well, I mean, an A C O can put an animal down.
Gonna happen.
What's not gonna happen?
Um, well, Tammy already doesn't want constables, because constables would be required to carry a firearm.
Who's Tammy? Okay, and so she didn't want the A C O to carry a gun either, because if the A C O needs to put, put, put an animal down, she calls the state patrol and state patrol come down.
Eric, you're going on a tangent, my friend, see, I'm not there to, to stop you from throwing your, uh, glasses down. Um, so let's just wait until we hear from Chester as far as exactly this entails, and then we can discuss it.
I was agreeing with what Mary said, is that if our police chief wants to control the amount of people with weapons in town, she wouldn't want the A C O with a weapon either.
Correct.
But also, they mentioned, Mary mentioned constables, and that's another thing, what, what do we want to do with this role of constables, do we, should we leave it there as is, um, or should we consider some sort of alternative solution, change in the bylaw regarding constables?
Well, I think we should consult with our chief and maybe with some surrounding towns and see if there's even a need for a constable now that we have uh, you know, more professional police department.
The only, I, I think the only thing I would add to that is unless there's a legal authority that a constable must carry a weapon, going back to what Tammy's concern is, a constable with a weapon, okay? We as a town, can we strip that if we want to, we can say our constables don't carry weapons? If that is within our jurisdiction as police commissioners.
Okay.
That's just a thought, I mean, there's more, more ways than one to skin this cat, so to speak.
Or we just don't touch it at all and, you know, it's there, you don't have to appoint constables, but one day when you need to, you can, I mean, I, I don't know, this is just something that's been come, coming up from time to time, once in a while I get an email from somebody asking about being a constable, um. But, uh, alright, we'll text.
I think there's a valid function in that request, Josh, I think if you get that request, right? I'm, I'm probably putting more thought into it, but people that want to be constables sometimes just want a good faith effort, other people want to gain that experience to improve their chances to get into a law force.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to, we have to balance those opportunities as well for our townspeople.
Okay, um, do we have any other new or old business, uh, we're all set with the warrant, I think, as is Josh, and we'll wait and see what you get back from council.
Yep.
Uh, do we have any older new business?
Yeah, old business, fridge is fixed, thank you, Joanne, for coordinating.
Thank you, Joanne.
Our fridge is up and running, fourteen hundred dollars plus later, it's working.
You're so, just take the accolades, you're good. Awesome. Mary has a comment.
Just in case anybody is wondering, according to Mass General Law, chapter one forty, section one fifty-one, the Board of Select shall designate an animal control officer who may be a police officer or a constable, so if permitted under the law.
Yeah, so also in your packets, you see one of these, we have a Blanford Day, we talked about at the last meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Um, Kara wanted us to see if there was any other Saturdays besides the one that was presented, ours is gonna be July seventeen at six thirty, the Westfield Star Fires, um, baseball team. There's a Blanford Day, we're gonna coordinate, you know, certain activities where.
Mark your calendars.
I think, was it you that was gonna sing the Star Spangled Banner, Karen?
Nope, nope, that was not me.
Eric?
Hmm, I don't think so.
You are, so give me a chance.
No, I was good, there's a couple of girls in town that are really strong singers, actually Kim Blanchett's niece and, um, Lemmy.
Well, let me. Did a, a select board relay race.
Hey, you know what, I think you just had an amazing idea, what if we could get all three of those young ladies together and have them sing an a cappella?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll reach out to, um, Bonnie and see if either of her daughters are interested in singing, I think it's just the two girls.
I mean, if we only get one opportunity, I would say that we should showcase all three of, three of our Blanford singing voices, and if we get three opportunities, we can give them. And if we get three opportunities, we can give them all one, one individual shot at fame.
Yeah, we'll see, yeah, we'll see if they're interested. And then we throw out the first pitch, I believe.
Yeah, we'll work out each of those details and make sure that, um but either way, if we can publicize as much as possible, get as much talent support. They're present and celebrate Blanford Day.
We need Blanford t-shirts.
We need Blanford.
Again, right back to the Blanford t-shirts, Team Blanford, who's making them?
And the last update I have, uh Mary came across a, a member of our community that's interested in joining the finance committee.
Really?
I'll have the um.
Do they really exist?
Say that, Kara. Um Deborah Brody, I have the letter of interest here, I can have it in your next select meeting, except. Mary and I were talking about and we're thinking that maybe, you know how you meet with town council an hour prior to town meeting?
Yep.
They, when everyone convenes and do the official appointment. Um but certainly have her come in and you can ask questions, she's, she's, uh she, she's. She holds a bachelor's of science degree in accounting from West Hill, I think she currently, yeah, she works at West Hill State, she's been there for thirty two years. In the finance department, so she, she has some sort of background experience.
Oh, cool.
One guy will totally drive her crazy. Right, Joanne?
So remind me what the appointment committee is made up of for finance, is it, it's finance, select board and the moderator, is that right?
You have to have a, you have to have a forum of those three and the town clerk.
And the town clerk, okay.
You and the moderator and the town clerk.
Does it include finance committee or no?
Yes. Yeah, it doesn't finance, or does finance not have a vote on that?
Finance is input, we want them to be there.
Okay, but it's an actual vote from select town clerk and moderator? Okay.
Yeah, the, there's five voting members.
Okay. Is there any other new or old business?
That is all.
What's the date of Dave Hobson's retirement, do you know?
The end of the.
I don't know.
June thirty, which, yeah, thanks, that, that's probably another update, the school district appointed a new superintendent.
Very excited about her, she's gonna be amazing. Alright, so um we're gonna go ahead and adjourn at seven fifty two.
We should, we should meet in March.
There, I'm gonna see you so you can sign this letter.
Alright.
Unless you're around tomorrow.
Um, I am around tomorrow, I can stop, uh what time are you there till?
Uh about four thirty, five o'clock.
Okay, why don't I swing by my way home? I leave school at about three.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Have a good night.
Bye.